I'd like to call the Peoria Public School District 150 Board of Education to meeting, Board of Education meeting to order for January 15th, January 25th, 2016. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Wolfmeier?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Cooley?
Here.
Mrs. Kastner?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here. Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First on our agenda is a community recognition. I would like to recognize, tonight, the Community Contribution Award recognizes Gerald M. Brookhart Arts in Education Spring Celebration. Hello, Mr. Brookhart. How are you? This annual celebration was developed in 1985 and is coordinated by the Regional Superintendent Beth Kreider-Derry and the Peoria County Regional Office of Education. Would like to have the speaker come up? Hello? Can you tell us a little bit about this? Tell you about the event?
Yes.
Okay.
Tell us a little bit about the program.
All right. My name is Mary Rouse. I'm the project director for the Gerald M. Brookhart Arts in Education Spring Celebration. And when Dr. Brookhart retired just a few years ago, we changed the name from the Arts in Education Spring Celebration. Even though it was a little long, it was definitely warranted to name it after its founder, Dr. Brookhart, who started this just in 1985, 31 years ago. Dr. Brookhart felt that the regional office of education was right there in the Peoria County courthouse. And people heard a lot about the things that were going on in the courthouse, the bad things that were going on in the courthouse with all those students inside. And he wanted people to see the good things that were happening in our schools, in the schools, District 150 in particular. And it started right there outside the courthouse plaza with the four high schools. And it was just one week long, but here we are, 31 years later, and it now encompasses over 100 schools over a five-week period. And we have over 10,000 students taking part over that five-week period on three stages. And what we normally do is we start from Memorial Day and just go back those five weeks. And we invite schools, and we have seven counties that take part and come to the Peoria County courthouse. And it's, like I said, Beth Kreider-Derry took over just a few years ago from Dr. Brookhart. Took a while there to find somebody that could fill those shoes, didn't it, Dr. Brookhart? That's why I'm up here talking. We all know that. So, fine arts are very important, as you know, in the lives of our students. I myself am a fine art educator. I graduated from Millikan University back in 1985 and came here to Peoria with my husband. Taught at Manuel High School, went on to teach at Peoria Heights. So, we know how, I know how important it is for those students. This is a non-competitive event. And no matter what the level of that performer or that artist is, if they step up onto a stage, and this is what I hear from my peers, those educators, if they step up onto that stage, they have made something of themselves. They are the ones that, they come off more confident, not only in their schoolwork, but also in their school activities and in the future workplace. This is what we see of the fine art student, like I said, whether it's a performer or an artist. And I want to take a minute and thank you all for taking the time to give us this award. And I want to introduce, of course, Dr. Jerry Brookhart, who's here with us today. Dr. Brookhart, stand up. Dr. Brookhart, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, yes.
I love that he looks to me.
When Mary's finished, I'll just be...
Okay, great.
...with conclusion.
All right. And I'll tell you a little bit about what we're going to do this year. Also with me today is Barb Waldorf from Arts Partners, President of Arts Partners. Barb, you want to join me for just a second here? Just come on over here in case I forget something. You don't have to say anything if you don't want to. But this year, we're doing something new and we want to make sure that everybody knows that we collaborate with the community of Peoria. And that's one of the things that we really are excited about, and excited about you giving us this award, because that's something that, in the last three years, I've been project director for three years. I've been part of Arts in Education Spring Celebration as a director. As a parent, my daughter went to Richwoods-Keller-Linburg-Richwoods High School and was there as an art student, proud mama. And when I taught at Peoria Heights High School, and I stood up there and directed the Heights High School Choir, I have pictures of her with her finger in my back pocket as I directed the choir. So, these, this is a family event. And we want all of the family members to remember that, because these kids will do that. But one of the things we're doing with Arts Partners, and we've all hopefully taken the advantage of going down to the Sculpture Walk Peoria, and, do we have a coloring book? I've given all of you up there, the board members, one of the coloring books that Sculpture Walk Peoria has come up with this year through a grant from the community foundation. And that coloring book is available to all of the schools, not only District 150, but all of the schools that are taking part in the spring celebration this year. And our hope is that the art teachers, or any of the teachers in the schools, will use this book to teach their students about sculptures and about art. And then they will maybe make a piece, a sculpture, bring it down, and present that at the spring celebration this year. We also know that funds have been difficult in the past years. A lot of schools like to maybe piggyback on a field trip with their performance, following their performance. I know, of course, I know what Keller does. In the past, Keller used to take the kids and go on a field trip. Funds have become tight. There is no cost to walk those kids one block and walk down Washington Street and tour Sculpture Walk Peoria. So, we would love to see the schools piggyback on a tour of Sculpture Walk Peoria, no cost. You're already downtown, add an extra half hour, walk down, teach those kids about art. You can add on the curriculum. Here we are collaborating with the schools. We are cross-curricular teaching. That's the educator in me, speaking out there. Have I covered everything, Mary?
I've covered everything. I would hope that everybody here has had a chance to go down to Washington Street and see the Sculpture Walk. We just closed the jury for the sculptures that will go up this year. They come from all over the country, and I understand we have at least one international entry this year. So, those 16 will be selected, and I think June 2nd is the opening of Sculpture Walk 2016.
And I do have extra coloring books. Dr. Brookhart?
I would like to just say a few parting words. First, my first association with Dr. Carrot was back when she was heading up Frank Campbell's Urban League GED program. She was just fresh out of college, and her dedication and her life is still dedicated to bringing along young people and adults as well in her quest to do well. So, I did want to report that. I also want to report that Tanya Jenkins is often impersonating you as she walks around. So, you might learn security about that. And I do miss President Ross's little conversations we used to have out in the hallway of the courthouse periodically. And, but I do want to say one thing too, to the board in particular, as a former history teacher, the reason we came to use the courthouse was because the wisdom of the board there, the county board at that time, was to turn it not into a parking lot, but into a place for people. And it was an oasis in the heart of the busy metropolitan area. And I think as board members, you have chances to make, reach out and do some outstanding things as well. And so, that kind of visionary look, that you people have the power and obviously the creativity and the authority to just make a better life for people in our community. And this is just a great example of it. So, I want to wish Dr. Carrot well. She's been one of my favorites for a long time, and I hope she's one of yours, too. Is that okay, make a shout out like that?
Thank you very much. I'll let you, go ahead.
Thank you, President Ross, and thank you, Dr. Brookhart. It's really nice to see you again. And he's correct, we've spent many, many years doing some amazing things for people in our community and our partners in art. You know, the thing that we really love, we, number one, we appreciate all that you've done for us, but what you're doing with the arts, it's so, it's fun, it's exciting. It provides an additional opportunity for kids to want to come to school. My son has participated. I have been down there. I remember Brung Bargett, and it was just beautiful, it's, and continues to be an amazing event. So, just a brief token of appreciation from our Board of Education and our school districts. So, thank you, and we're looking for many, many, many years of continued collaboration. Is Beth, you're welcome. Is Ms. Derry here? Beth? Is Beth here? No, I'm sorry. Beth couldn't be here this evening. She had another commitment, and she thanks you as well. Thank you a lot.
All right. Tell Beth we said hello and thank you, and Sue Kingery as well, because I worked with her for a number of years. She kept going, kept it going for a number, number of, 10 years, actually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, President Ross. Whittier Primary School hosted its third annual history fair on January 7th. And eighth, Whittier Principal, Mr. Sell, is here along with interventionist Anna Rose and some Whittier families to share about the experience and some of their projects. I actually attended and was very, very pleased. The kids did some amazing work. So, Ms. Rose, can you tell us some more, please?
Yeah, this kind of ties into what Mary was saying about tying in multi-curricular activities into the art, into the science, math, integrating these projects, because this ties along with Common Core State Standards. And the projects that we do at Whittier help develop the Common Core State Standards and integration of multi-different types of topics, including art. The project that we did in the fall was the history fair. We will have a spring science fair, and in May, we'll have an international studies where the students investigate different countries, learn traditions, and research. The Whittier History Fair is an inquiry-based project that expands the Marzano's higher-order thinking skills, which include knowledge, evaluation, analysis. And in this process, students are given topics with guiding questions. Students research these questions and gather information and work on developing strong thesis statements to trigger their learning and to find out answers to what they want to answer their questions for. They provide a conclusion with a reflective piece at the end to see if what they wanted to find out about this topic actually changed their minds or expand their horizons on the specific topic. We also have opportunity for them to speak and listen to the presentations, which are part of Common Core State Standards. And we invite judges that are part of our administrative team. For example, Tanya Jenkins and Susan Gobine serve as judges. And we also have broadly students come over and judge the history for projects in which the students develop these skills on speaking and expanding on their knowledge. After they're judged, the next day, we invite the different classrooms to come in, and students actually stand by their projects and talk about it, so they share their knowledge base with the whole school. So, it's a learning process for them as well as for the other students that come through and listen to their presentation. I, at this time, would like to introduce some of the kids and their projects, and I'll have the kids come up to the front and maybe stand by their projects. I have a second grader, Claire Slot, she did women's suffrage. Sadie McMorris, Ellie Urich, they did an architect study of Gustav Eiffel. You want to stand over there? Kate Will Lewis did child labor laws. Cortez Erby, history of Pepsi. Caroline Harris, presidential pets. Haley Strickler did the Eiffel Tower. Vivian Lobdell did the history of the Olympics. Jackson Andrews, Pearl Harbor. Gabriel Andrews, the history of video games. And these are all wonderful topics that interest the kids. They did a wonderful job investigating. And without the support of the fine teachers, like, for example, we have Mrs. O'Malley here with us. She is a strong supporter of all our projects and promotes that in the classroom. And above all, we honor parents who are here as well, because without them, it's a team effort. We work together with the parents, the students, and teachers to create these positive things for students that help enrich them and help give them that ultimate goal of researching and going to college and looking for those specific things, and also looking at our past history, so that they learn about these things in a different way. And I also want to ask Mr. Sell to come up and thank him for our support, because without the administrative support, we can't do our fund projects like this. Students will be recognized at the end of the year during their honors assembly and receive medals and trophies for their placement. So, we would like to invite board members, maybe for our spring event, for our science fair, to come out and witness some of these fabulous presentations and projects. Thank you.
And I'll add one thing that I think is really important about this event, is it is the third annual one at Whittier that was set up by Ms. Rose. But I think the powerful piece is that this was not an in-class project. We had over 40 students involved, about, of about 120, second through fourth graders. Forty students do this on their own, get organized with their classmates, and shows what a strong program we have, and the support, again, of the families of these students. So, we really do appreciate the families' efforts, as well as these students doing a great job. So, thank you, students.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any parents, parents and teachers, please stand? Any parents of the students? Thank you, Ms. Rose and Mr. Sell. Next is the Alignment Rockford update.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. I just wanted to let the students know that I know they're going to be very, very successful in life. I mean, they've already started going above and beyond, and that's amazing. So, keep up, keep up the good work, students. We're really proud of you. Just a quick update regarding Alignment Rockford for the board. On January 15th, about 200 business and community leaders joined the district to learn more about the collaboration between Alignment Rockford and the Rockford School District 205. And I'm looking out in the audience, and I've seen, I think, Mr. Knapp, were you in attendance? I think City Manager was in attendance, and I'm sure I'm missing some individuals. But it was actually a very, very good turnout, as I said, about 200 individuals. It fits perfectly with what you'll be hearing a little bit more about today regarding our strategic plan. We will need the community, the community, to join us to make this plan work and to put as many boots on the ground as possible. Alignment Rockford is one model that a peer community uses to align goals among all stakeholders so that they can see greater returns on investment through less duplication and more efficiency. And that's why we were sort of interested in exploring it a little bit more. Align Rockford is a toolset to connect stakeholders and the school district, so that all can work towards progress on the district's strategic plan. They have a governing board and an operating board that supports and reports on pieces of the plan, including, in Rockford, healthy starts, career awareness, college awareness, and pathways. Our district's strategic plan has five pillars. It's possible that the Alignment Model, or another model, could support and report for us one or more of those pillars. It's a win-win for all stakeholders, as we look to keep the community engaged and everyone accountable to the measures of the strategic plan. So, this is just a quick update, board, regarding Alignment Rockford and what occurred on January 15th. Are there any questions?
Questions? Okay. All right, under District Presentations for the Fine Arts Update, who's doing it? Ms. Jenkins?
I have asked the team to, since I started, it's, obviously, this is an area that's of interest to all of us, the fine arts. You just heard from Dr. Brookhart and his team, and the importance of arts in education and what it does for kids when they're really involved with the arts. It's an area of interest for us. Then, I found out Mary Jo is back in town, and I reached out to her and said, hey, we're really, really interested in taking our arts program to the next level. Can you work with our team? And so, I am happy the team, Ms. Jenkins, and the rest of the individuals will introduce themselves, that I'm really excited about the plan. So, can you please share with us what you've, what you've created thus far?
Definitely. Good evening, President Ross and Superintendent Carrot, and we also appreciate the rest of the board members in the cabinet. I am Tanya Jenkins, and one of the things that was my privilege to be included in was the arts piece. My background is definitely in the arts, so I'm definitely already an arts advocate, have been a past principal of the, one of these schools of choice that we have in the district, which is our Roosevelt Magnet Program, and worked very closely with Peoria High, that then transfers our students and moves them into the high school lane. So, tonight, what we're going to see from the team, we're looking at where we are with the arts in District 150, and then taking a look at some proposed ideas that we think would help move our program into where we need to be to be competitive and to be aligned with some of the best programs that we see in the surrounding area. I brought with me this evening Mary Jo Pappidge, as we've, we've worked together well before and worked together in many projects. To my right, so is Mary Jo Pappidge, and as they explain their sections of this presentation, they'll, they'll give a little bit more of an introduction. Bev Stennis comes from the Roosevelt Magnet School, and then we have Jason Warner, he's at the Peoria High School. And Dan Hiles was in this role, helping with arts in the past. So, the team has come together to present to you tonight some of our findings. Mary Jo?
I'm on. It's good to be back, and how can you say no to helping the students in Peoria Public Schools? And you can't say no to Sharon Carrot. So, I am here and happy to be here to tell you about that fourth R that William Bennett, the former U.S. Secretary, said, the arts are so essential, just like reading, writing, and math, music, dance, painting, theater, unlock profound human understanding, accomplishment. And that's pretty heavy, but truly, truly, it does. And we're going to share with you a little bit more. I started in 150 as a sub, substitute teacher, went on to teach middle school band, and then Woodruff High School Band Director, and then coordinator of fine arts here at the district level. And I have kept in touch and kind of know what's going on in the district, have been visiting the schools with this wonderful bunch of professionals here. But I want to tell you something special that just happened last month. Most school boards probably don't even know this yet. The Every Student Succeeds Act, E.S.S.A., that Lyndon Johnson signed or legislated, has now been brought back up, and it replaces the No Child Left Behind in the upcoming school year. So, where No Child Left Behind focused more on academic success and reading and math, this basically replaces it and says that music and art are standalone subjects. And the intent of the legislation is to provide supplemental funds and programs to serve low-income students and enable state and local education agencies to improve the quality of overall elementary and secondary education. So, art leaves no child left behind, and that's, that's what we want to go with. So, as you speed read through these wonderful tools that, that the art students can use to be productive citizens of tomorrow, you heard them speak tonight, Mary Rouse, so eloquently, and Jerry Brookhart, which has been a catalyst for the arts here for a long time. And there are parents here in the back that have said to me, my students wouldn't be, my kids wouldn't have careers if it wasn't for the arts. So, all these things, you know, we, we might not be able to travel to South Africa, but we can understand the culture by painting something of it or seeing and moving to it and learning about cultures. And my two favorite ones up here are developing critical and analytical thinking skills, which the job workplace is asking for. No matter what kind of job, those are critical skills that are needed. And my other favorite one is in working with students and then studying what the workforce needs today and having them choose careers, truly learning creative ways to problem solve. What does the world need anymore today than creative problem solvers? So, what does that mean for us sitting here tonight and for our, for our students here? It can mean that the arts, if the students have a chance to go in the arts, and when I say the arts, I'm talking about fine and performing arts. I'm talking about all the areas of music, band orchestra, choir, general music. I'm talking about all the visual arts and drama theater, onstage and off, and dance. And of course, we have dance at both the Roosevelt School and the PSA. But if the kids are involved in those things, these are national statistics on National Endowment for the Arts, says it improves daily attendance. We've seen it. It reduces the need for disciplinary action, lower dropout rates, and that's exactly what we want, is to increase graduation rates, developing positive relationships with academic learning, those students, especially in band and orchestra. It's proven that they have higher ACT/SAT scores. And what Mary said about the confidence builder, I have been interviewing young teachers now for over 25 years for jobs here in this school district and two at the North Shore. And I can tell you, I can come, I can tell when the young teacher comes in for the interview, if they've been in the performing arts or not, simply for the way they hold themselves and conduct themselves. No matter what kind of job interview our students go to, we want to help them with us. So, we can connect learning experiences to the world through all these special things they're doing, the posters here tonight, travel, and learning by doing in the arts. And my last quote... And my last quote before I get to leave you and have you go on to Bev is, our president has said, "The future belongs to young children with an education and the imagination to create." And that's what we're here to talk about tonight, is to actually motivate and inspire creation in our children.
Hi, I'm Bev Stenish. As they said, I'm thirty-one years a teacher, nineteen years in the district, and all of it at Roosevelt Magnet. I started with Ms. Jenkins as principal, and Ms. Karat and Ms. Stockman, who I see is here, also as my principals. We were back there together in nineteen ninety-seven. So I've been there a while. We are now considering ourselves more of just a primary and middle school than a magnet school, and we would love to get back to magnet status. Why magnet program at primary and middle? The only thing I can say is we would need to be there for those children who need more than what should be in a general school. I agree that all schools should have music and art, but a magnet program would serve those children who need more, just like Washington serves those children who need more enrichment. We are a kindergarten, eighth grade geographical population, and we're very mobile right now. That did not used to be a problem with the magnet. It has become a very real reality for us. We are hoping, we have dropped in population a bit, and we'd love to build back up to more capacity at six hundred fifty, seven hundred students, where we could serve their arts needs. We'd start by next year just opening up what we have, take those five hundred and thirty positions, and build it to six hundred and fifty by inviting students with an interest to come. We have limited, we have, we're short-staffed right now. We could certainly use a little more support, and I think with more students, we would need to add that. Because of district problems and our numbers, we had to drop orchestra and drama this year and rearrange our teachers, and we'd love to get those two programs back. We have actually taken some of our programs and had to, for the good of our students, for their familiarity, pull them into long-term subpositions in the classroom, causing doubling in our arts classes, and these kind of things would need to be addressed so that we could have highly qualified people doing their jobs as they were taught to in college. We have choices right now in art, band, choir, and dance, but it is completely contingent upon scheduling. If we don't have a dance teacher available at that time, the kids can't take it. So we would need to have a process where all of the scheduling was accommodating to those students' talents and interests, everyone individually. Go ahead, you're fine. At this time, we have a hard time bringing people in. When they knock at the door, please, please, come in. We will do everything we can to get our kids together for you, but we would love to increase to a full calendar, just packed full of arts professionals coming in, parents helping with those things, art field trips, you can read it, performances and displays. The majority of our eighth graders right now go to the high school they're supposed to go to. We would love to be the school that supplies our high school program with the core of its student population for the talents of the arts. Just a shout-out to our building. We are the oldest original space still out there. We're circa nineteen thirty, and we have all we need. It's a beautiful building, and it's not in a bad place, we're right below Bradley. We're close to downtown, to the Civic Center, to all these arts opportunities, so I think we're in a good position to get back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Bev. Good evening, Board. My name is Jason Warner. I'm a teacher at Lincoln K-8 and Peoria High School. I was born and raised here in Peoria. I began my orchestra instruction at Tree Run. I'm also a member of the Peoria Symphony. So at Peoria High School, where are we as a program and what are our needs? Let me preface this by saying, when students are interested and motivated about a school or program, it solves a lot of problems. In the past, we faced several issues in regards to the audition process for the PSA. We have had limited or no interaction with students. We had breaks in communication. We had a rigid schedule where auditions were held on one day, low staff participation from our feeder programs, and parent communication was inefficient. Fast forward to 2015, 2016, with the blessing of administration, all eighth graders were part of the process this year. We had an easy flow of communication. We also had schedules that accommodated middle schools, and parents were notified district-wide prior to the auditions. In 2014, 2015, last year, we had only forty-five students go through the process. This year, we had six hundred and thirty students go through the process. Decisions needed to be made. Let's take a look at our curriculum. Our current curriculum is limited with our course offerings due to limited staff. We have little or no flexibility in class sizes. We also have limited opportunities for individual student and ensemble growth. At Peoria High School, we have an MOU that gives us a certain degree of operational flexibility, and we're asking for that same flexibility when it comes to the arts. We would like to increase the course selections to meet the students' and college needs. We would like to increase the staffing to offer and enrich the arts curriculum. We'd like to have the district assigning staff, and we'd also like to have expanded opportunities for student instruction, either through private instruction or community engagement. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Hiles, and I've had the opportunity to be in this position before. I currently serve as Assistant Principal over at Lincoln K-8, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the fine arts curriculum. At the start of the 2013-14 school year, the challenge was presented to the fine arts department to form a committee and establish a curriculum. By the end of the 2013-14 school year, a functional fine arts curriculum had been created. There's still work to be done on it, but a solid framework has been kind of put in place. So there are seven areas in which we provide fine arts instruction in 150, and they include band, choir, dance, drama, general music, orchestra, and the visual arts. Within each of these content areas, the curriculum committee, which was comprised of representative members of each content area, created what we called key concepts for the respective areas. Key concepts were these big ideas, are components of each discipline necessary to understanding, creating, and performing the arts within each respective area. Key concepts in this curriculum are derived from the learning standards for fine arts, which consist of three goals. Those are to know the language of the arts, through creating and performing, understand how works of art are produced, and understand the role of arts in civilizations, past and present. Within each key concept, specific objectives were created according to grade and/or ability level. These objectives are specific end-of-year goals that students in any given discipline should be able to understand, create, or perform. During the latter part of the 13-14 school year, the idea of creating appendices for music and visual arts came up, and work began on that as well. The idea behind it was that students, teachers, administrators, and other stakeholders could use it as a reference. If an administrator is reviewing lesson plans for a fine arts teacher, and an unfamiliar term or concept is being covered in the plans, the appendices would help provide them some insights to that particular concept. If a student is reviewing for a test over note values in music or identifying the principles or elements of art, the appendices would provide them clear support. So now that you have an idea of kind of what we currently have in the department as far as curriculum is concerned, Tanya's going to speak about some next steps as we move forward.
Thank you. As you can see, we have come together, I started working with the arts last year with Dan, working on the curriculum, trying to make sure that we were moving forward with that, and at this time, I'd like to share that I've also been out into the schools, talking with arts teachers, working with some of their concerns, talking about some of these things. And so this is not just this team that's putting this together, but we've been working within the schools. When we did the process this year for the eighth grade auditions going into ninth grade, we did it a little bit differently. I asked that we do all schools, all students, all eighth graders going through the process, meaning that all eighth graders had a chance to hear the opportunities afforded to them if they were to move to the performing school arts at Peoria High, and then they had the option of saying yes or no, as opposed to just saying, "I'm in orchestra, and so therefore I'm going to just do the orchestra audition," which was very nice to see, because we had a lot of boys come out for some things. So it was very nice to see that once students understood that you didn't have to be a professional already to do this, they partook, were partaking, rather, in the audition process and not necessarily auditioning. And if they then said, "Hey, I still don't want to do this," then they were released to go back to class. So I'd like to share with you some of the other things on our next, what we'd like to propose for going forward. This would mean that all fourth, K-fourth grade students would receive two class periods minimum a week. What we find, what we found in doing the process that we currently have is that some schools schedule arts, you know, maybe once a week, twice a week, sometimes they schedule it once, a rotation within the quarters. So you might have choral music, that's not a good example, but visual arts, you might have for one nine weeks, and then you don't see it again until the end of the year. So we are proposing that all schools that are K-four receive two class periods minimum a week, and it would be all year long, one in general music and one in visual arts. And then for the fifth through eighth grade students, we would move to the three class periods minimum a year, meaning that would include our instrumental, general music, and art. Again, we understand you can't get all three, but at least they would have the option to be able to get these in, and if they have it three days a week, then we're being able to maximize the curriculum that we are proposing and be able to actually follow a timeline to completing that curriculum. And then all middle schools would have a band, orchestra, choral, and you can see for yourself an art program, visual arts program, with district assistance. And that means, again, that we would be looking at, from this level, from the district level, helping to tighten up how we assign arts teachers so that we're maximizing that effectiveness of what they're teaching and where they're teaching it within their own region. Also, expected participation by all middle schools in all city festivals. What we're finding right now is that that's become more of an optional, and our students are not getting the maximum influence of being able to see community events that are happening and just have that overall understanding of the opportunity of the arts. So we were saying that that would be something that would be an expectation at the district level and for all middle schools. Then moving to the high schools, we would say that's where you then would get your five class periods a week, and again, those would be for all year. Obviously, a student, again, would be selecting where they would, where that would be, in which of those areas. We would implement the district curriculum that we've shown you that is outlined and ready to go, and then having adequate staffing in these areas by qualified personnel supported at the district level with that scheduling, as I've mentioned. Moving on, here's a couple of other things. For the PSD, Fine Arts Curriculum, we understand that we have our rationale, but then there would be clear expectations, the continuity of instruction, hire performing students. Again, you can imagine when you're going into a school that only schedules something once a week as opposed to somebody that does it three times a week, those levels are not going to be the same, and therefore, by the time they get to the high school, you cannot have a performing group that's being able to perform at the same level because they didn't all have the same instruction. So we would have higher performing students across our high schools, and it would be a tool for actually measuring growth with that outlined curriculum. So therefore, we know that, starting with our district institutes, starting on Wednesday, there's still a few things that need to be finished up, but that curriculum is ready to go for next year. So you can see that we would still need to do some professional development for those teachers that have not seen that curriculum. They'll see it again on Wednesday, and we'll start to be able to enforce and move forward with the curriculum. And this just shows you that we would have, obviously, the consistent language throughout and that vertical and horizontal alignment, which is so important, and we always do in all curricular areas, and so therefore, we'd have it in the arts as well. A few other things that we've added that we think would be beneficial to our programming would be also, right now, we would like to identify lead teachers to facilitate our choice schools, being Roosevelt Magnet and Peoria High, and we know that we could take someone such as Bev and Jason at the schools and ask, actually have them helping to coordinate all of the arts programming that would be occurring and to make sure that that was happening and that they would be collaborating up and down the chain to make sure that students were getting the experiences that they need K-12. Right now, I'm acting as coordinating, helping to coordinate the arts along with all my other responsibilities, and so we're saying that it would be great to be able to enlist the support of experienced people such as Mary Jo Pappich, Sharon Reed, and to be able to say, okay, they would also help at the K-8 and at the choice schools of Peoria High School and Roosevelt and connect the community. Both of us have very strong connections to the community and the theaters. Right now, I'm working to work on a couple of shows where our students would be able to be involved with those auditions at the Civic Center. So we have a lot of community connections that we can make happen once we have that extra support and a couple other hands on deck to make it happen. No teacher leadership team. We'd like to see that there was a teacher leadership council, just as we have a leadership team for academics. We'd like to see one that would be represented by the different regions in the district. Their goal would be to come together each month and help to take a look at the equity of instrumental usage, to look at performances, to look at all those things that, if you have a council taking a look at it, it keeps that standard nice and high. We also would need to take a look at our inventory. So we've asked all the teachers, arts teachers, to bring their inventory list to the institute on Wednesday so that we can get a handle on what we have and what we don't have, so that we can make sure that schools have what they need to run the programs effectively that we are proposing. And obviously, the staff development has to continue so that everyone understands the pacing guides and the things that would be expected of them for development of the arts. It's very important that we have that community. There's so much, having served as the president of Peoria Players, been on the Arts Partners' Board, we all have those connections, help to direct and choreograph a play. So there are so many things that I know personally are available to our students, and I'm working with a couple of directors at Peoria Players and Cornstalk and whatnot, so that we could have those summer connections where students could actually get on board to have extra opportunities throughout the summer, extra performance opportunities, as you can see for yourself, actually going to some of these performances and being a part of an audience. We have opportunities to get tickets for students at, you know, little or no cost, and then doing some mentoring. We've got a lot of things happening, again, at those local theaters and the communities where they would be willing to come in and work with our students and show them how to run a soundboard, how to do the lights, how to do tech, build a set, all those kinds of things that would make our students very viable in the community as a part of the arts world. And then, again, getting the field trips back online at grade levels, that's another activity we'll be doing at Institute Wednesday, is by grade level, making sure that students have specific, expected field trips so that they get exposure to those opportunities that are right here in our community that we're not taking advantage of. And as was mentioned by both, we obviously have to take a look at our technology. There's all types of software out there that we're aware of, that we would be able to utilize, to put in front of our students, to, again, if they're going to be going to, through any of these fields with the intent to get college scholarships or to make that a career, we want to make sure that they've got the most up-to-date information, and there's a lot of software and technology out there if we have access to it. And you can see some of these things include, like, the sounding and the recording packages that we would be recommending for use. And that's a quick overview, quick overview, but thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins, Jason, Bev Stenish, Ms. Pappich, and Dan. Do you like it?
I see it.
Ms. Wolfmeyer has a question.
First of all, you don't have to sell me on the benefits of fine arts. I have a youngest son that benefited greatly from the choral music at Woodruff, and you're absolutely right. It makes a difference in self-confidence, how they present themselves. His, I think, fondest memories and greatest positive influences came from music when he was in high school. He was also involved in athletics and student government, but that was overriding. I'm glad to see that we're working on the primary and middle school level because he was introduced to music early, and that piqued his interest, and he got into it right away. And I know we had a presentation, I think, last spring about how we had so many kids who were getting to high school that wanted to be in the orchestra, the band had never had an instrument before. So if we can't get our primary and middle school programs going, that's why our high school programs are really suffering. So I think that's very, very important, and so I'm really glad to see you guys are working on that part, too. So I, it's, we need to keep fine arts in our schools. A lot of people do not understand what an influence it has on our kids, but it is very, very positive. So thank you for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Ms. Jenkins?
I guess I'm excited.
I guess I'm excited. As a person that went through Roosevelt and was in choir and I was given free voice lessons from my teachers, instructors, Mrs. Fusson and Ms. Bayless, who probably are no longer with us, and I didn't have to audition for the manual choir because I was at Roosevelt in fine arts. It has a definite effect on academics, has a definite effect on behavior, and this would help solve a lot of our problems within the district. So I am really excited and I just can't wait to see this shootout and be all that the kids need.
Awesome. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Excuse me, I have a couple, if I could. One of the benefits, I think, of, of music in particular, I was in the hind school in Richwoods Band and Jazz Band and some other things. A wonderful experience. It was great and still play today, believe it or not. And the idea of self-discipline and what, what it takes to become proficient and excel in a, in instrument and the time it takes away from school as part of your growing up is really important. And I think that's something that comes through when you see students that are really devoted to their music. They are, they have a great deal of discipline. And anyone who's in a professional orchestra understands what that discipline is and it is, it is exacting. A couple of thoughts. Have we ever thought about teaching history through art? Because if you look at what art does and the history of art, you can see an entire range of development of civilization through the artwork that was done in that time period. That's just a thought. Do you have enough students in each of the middle schools to create an orchestra in each one or a group, or do you have to combine them? And I would say, I don't have a detailed answer, but it's just a thought. How do you get scale to the point where you can do that?
And one of the things that we were talking about, when we went through the schools this time, we saw where students had been in orchestra and then had missed getting it, and so we'd lost students. So we were able to see which schools had students that were missing that piece of it. So in our scheduling, that's why we said if we scheduled from the district level, we'd be able, we have that information. So we were saying that if there is an orchestra and enough interest there, that it would be there for the students. Right now, sometimes even if the interest is there, there's no teacher there. So what we're saying is make it available and then if there isn't a need, then obviously that wouldn't happen, but just to make it available.
Okay. And then, then finally, in terms of-
And we have the instruments. I'm sorry, and we also found, I didn't mean to interrupt, we also have found that there's instruments at schools that are not being used that we could then get to those sites to make sure that they were, they were used.
And just in terms of, I, I know that it's, it's very expensive to, to purchase and maintain instruments. That, I think, is a terrific fundraising opportunity in the sense of, it's one thing to ask somebody to contribute to the school district. It's another thing to say, we need it, we need a set of timpani, or we need a cello, or we need a B-flat clarinet. We, we need to have something that specifically gives people a chance, either through a catalog or some other form, either to donate or to purchase so that they can, it is entirely different than asking them just for a sum of money. It is, I was responsible for doing that specific thing. So keep that in mind.
And we agree with you, and one of the things, that's why we're doing the inventory list, so that we know exactly what we have and where we have it, and we found, I think you told me, 13 cellos when we were at one school. So we, so we're able to see exactly and be able to do what you're saying.
I would guarantee you that there are thousands of instruments in the Peoria community that were once played by loving students and they need to be given a new life someplace, so.
We had a haphazard comment go out on Facebook earlier this year. I don't know if you realize that the Roosevelt kids, all the fifth graders, signed up for band and we did not have enough instruments. And it went out on Facebook and before we knew it, we had all kinds of instrument donations from all over the city and we do have almost every single fifth grader on an instrument this year and they're very excited about it. And that's from public donations, just an outcry on Facebook.
So, thank you. I appreciate it. It's obviously an important part of the education and I am excited to hear about this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I wanted to just thank you all, you know, and, and welcome, welcome some people back. I, I know you were very instrumental in a young man that I, I helped to mentor. I know you know Cedric Higgins. Cedric and my daughter were best friends, but, but we've got the greatest talent sitting right there in front of us that can make this happen. I mean, Tanya has been very modest, but she was one of, one of the first Dallas cowgirls. Is that right, Tanya?
Cheerleader.
If you say so.
Yeah, cheerleader. Cheerleader, let me clear that up.
What I preferred to also mention is I danced with Dallas Blake Dance Theater, so that was, you know, I liked that one better, but yes, I've done both.
So, so the talent is, is here. We just have to tap into it. Anything else?
I just have a, I just have a question. One of the little, little boys that lives in my neighborhood came to my house the other day and he had an instrument. He said he was in band. He goes to Glen Oak. And it was like a little plastic-
Recorder.
Recorder. Thank you. I was trying to get him to explain to me exactly what it was and, and how it operated. I said, is it similar to a flute?
More like a clarinet.
A clarinet.
Recorder's, we, we tend to use them with our third and fourth graders as a pre-band experience and they do have the same fingering as a clarinet. And the kids just get very, they think they're going to get that thing that you push a button and record your voice as you talk about it, but event mojo, did you ever say about a recorder? That's generally what we do.
Well, one of the things, one of, excuse me, one of the things that I saw in him, because my husband takes him to, to school, the excitement of the anticipation of being able to be in the band at some, you know, within that next year or whatever. And I felt when he was talking with me, the confidence that he had in himself of being able to play those five notes for me. And it was so cute, but I, you know what, I, in him, if, if you build confidence in children, they have that self-worth and sometimes that's exactly what it takes is them to have self-worth within themselves and that confidence to go on to be all that they can be. So I, I commend the arts. I could never play an instrument. I could barely sing, but, but it is, it is a very, 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 very excellent program for our children and it's something that is definitely needed to help them just because of the fact that we have so many children in the district that do have low self-esteem and the expression of being able to be in the arts, just, you can watch children just blossom. So I appreciate everything that you all are doing and kudos to each of you.
Thank you. The last thing that I wanted to add was we do have a couple of other of the arts teachers that showed up tonight. We want to thank them for being in the audience tonight. When we did our presentations in front of the eighth graders, we were very clear about what careers they can have in the arts under each of their areas. And so students were very, I think, amazed sometimes to hear graphic artists, what, you know, the different areas that they can actually make a career out of, should they start to and go through any of these, or at least to be able to add it to their resume. So we talked about those kinds of things, too. So never too soon to get them interested. And we said, neither if you don't do any of these things as careers, to be able to appreciate the arts and support the arts is also very important. So just as a community member, to understand the importance of that. So thank you for your time this evening.
Peoria School District, 150 High School Options Pathway Update.
Thank you. I've asked Ms. Johnson to give us an update. What I'll say is as she makes her way down, those are some of the words that I think of as we're transforming and getting ready for online registration, high school registration. We're moving more towards hands-on experiences for our kids. There's some sort of an excitement. For me, it has to be all about fun and excitement and options for young people. So high school is becoming more and more fun via options for young people. So thank you, Ms. Johnson, for giving us an update in terms of where we are right now regarding the pathways.
Good evening. Board President Ross and Dr. Carratt, thank you for allowing me to come. I said I think I'm being punished for being so antsy at the last board meeting when it was the national championship, but Roll Tide, we did win and I did see the best half. But I am excited following these two great presentations. I read in one of my principal's newsletters this weekend that average is officially over. So starting with Whittier to the Fine Arts Program and then hopefully through mine, you're going to see that average is officially over in District 150 and that's exciting for me to be a part of that and I hope you're feeling that same way. This week marks our kickoff for Pure, for our high school registration. So it's exciting. Parents of middle school kids are getting a little frantic because their babies are growing up. Rising senior parents are thanking the good Lord because they only have one more year to put up with it. But I'll tell you, with the exception of dealing with social media and he said, she said, I wished I could go back and be a student in Peoria Public Schools with where we're headed. It's great times. For most of us in this room, high school is not the way we see it and we have to make sure that parents understand that, that when we went to school, we basically earned a diploma. Where we're no longer, no longer just earning a diploma in Peoria Public Schools, which to me, we just saw some future governors in those Whittier kids. And for our PSA and our kids at Roosevelt, there is an arts pathway. So our core selections are going to be geared towards student interest and that's so important because that is what's going to help curb the dropout rate and keep our kids in school. Our curriculum is becoming with more experiences relevant and practical, we're going to have opportunities for internships, jobs, shadowing. Our kids are walking out with licensers and credentials. So all of that's changed for most of us. How that's changed is through career technical education. And you say, well, Ravanda, we had barbering back at Treewind years ago and cosmetology. That was the old vocational education program and it has been around for 30, 40 years. However, the difference between then and now is it's more formalized through a pathway so that we can prepare our students. When you hear me talk about clusters and pathways, oh my, clusters isn't the funk that we find ourselves in. There are 16 career clusters that have been identified by the Department of Education. They took all the jobs in the United States, they grouped them by how things are alike skills, and they said there are 16 career clusters. Within those 16 career clusters, they identified 79 career pathways that exist across the United States. Peoria Public Schools offers 36 of these 79 pathways and that's something for us to be proud of. We also offered in 16, all 16 career clusters. So we are putting Peoria on the map. Once again, with like a lot of other things in this district, we're a step ahead of everybody else in Illinois. So that should make us all very proud and very exciting. How does this work? Used to, kids would go through school, get a diploma, they would either go into the workforce, go into an armed forces, or they'd go to college. A lot of you have experienced young people going to college, or you yourself went to college about your junior year and you decided you didn't like what you did, so you spent two more years, they got two more years of tuition, and that's why so many people in the United States are walking around with a lot of debt. What we're doing is we're exposing our kids to Paxton classes, starting in middle school. This exposes them to the various career clusters and pathways that are out there. It tells them that if you like these jobs, this is the type of education you need. You can start right out of high school, you might need some community college, or you may need a four-year degree. It also talks about salary. We can't hide that because money is important to our young people. So we, that also puts that out there. They start Paxton in sixth grade, so by the time they're through in eighth grade, they went through every Paxton module and they've been exposed. Also, we partner up with Career Cruising. Career Cruising is a platform, it's an internet-based platform that allows kids to do self-assessment so they know what they're interested in. If you're not interested in kids and they get on your nerves, then you definitely wouldn't take classes that took you down the education pathway. If you're scared of blood, then that's not, you wouldn't go into a field that had that type of engagement with that. So these things help our young people know what they're interested in. By their eighth grade, they develop what Illinois calls an ILP, an Illinois Learning Plan. A lot of parents will say, well, I'm going to tell you right now, my child in eighth grade doesn't know what they want to be. That's okay. Most of us didn't know in eighth grade. Some of us did and we changed our minds. But this at least gets us started. So then these eighth graders, they have the ILP and they say, I want to be a teacher, I want to be a doctor. Then we start gearing them towards these specific classes. No longer will counselors just sit and say, well, seventh period, the only thing open is art, so you're going to have to take that. If a kid is interested in the art pathway, they should be doing that. But for our kids that just stood up and you can already, you know, hear that governance pathway maybe coming out in them, they may be taking more sociology, more economics classes, so classes that interest them. As we continue to move through high school, they will also continue to work on their ILP. It does change. And it's better to change in high school when it doesn't cost than it does when you get to college. By the time they graduate hopefully from Peoria Public Schools, they'll know that I loved all those accounting classes and those math classes, so I do want to continue to move forward to be a financial advisor. I love the fact that I learned about the different parts of the body and I love the way blood works, so I do want to be a phlebotomist. I'm glad I finished that program at Woodruff. So these are the things and our goals that we're hoping to move forward. As we did that, we looked at, there was a lot going on in the district, but as I said earlier, our mistakes have been that we haven't formalized and made it flow properly. So when Dr. Carratt came in and said, Ravanda, be bold, make it work, make it flow, that's what we did and we're very excited about that, making it happen. At all of our high schools, each high school offers dual credit, so you don't just say, well, the only people can take it is at Richwoods. That's not accurate. All of our kids across the district this week and next have been taking the compass placement test for ICC. They have to meet the ICC requirements in order to take those college-level classes, but we've been studying for that first semester and we have been taking the exams this week and next. Each school offers introductory pathway courses. There's all these introductory courses, every school offers them. Each school in the district offers the business pathway and each school is equipped with a counseling center to explore options. We are encouraging our parents and our students to use the counseling website for all of these opportunities. Then we said, let's focus, let's make it more focal, let's put our strengths where they lie, and we started with Manual Academy. We have a wonderful, phenomenal man down there named Andrew Weiss. Andrew will be at all three of our curriculum fairs, starting tomorrow night at Richwoods High School. Any kid in the district who is interested in going into the manufacturing pathway will attend Manual High, Manual Academy. So they, even if they're a Richwoods zone, they could go down there to sit for these courses. You can walk out of Manual, green belt certified through the Six Sigma program. These are high expectations for our kids and we're thrilled about that. Mr. Weiss will be teaching welding classes through ICC. Our kids will be earning dual credit. We also have the Health Oc program and the Early Childhood Program that leads to dual credit and exposure at Manual, as well as the Governance Pathway of the Army ROTC. If you know anything about ROTC programs, no matter if it's Army, Navy, Air Force, or Marine, they teach the basics of our American government and our leadership and then they teach, they develop those leadership skills within the kids. Years ago, we lost interest in the Naval ROTC at Peoria High, so we do allow the kids who are interested in this pathway to attend Manual, since we have opening seats at Manual for those kids to do that, to be able to go to the ROTC program there. As we move forward, we're very proud of Knoxville Center for Student Success. This is a credit completion program. Unfortunately, sometimes no matter how great the parent, our students sometimes don't always make the choices that we want them to make. And we don't want to give up on these kids. In December, Mr. Thomas and his staff graduated 25 students that would have been counted as dropouts for Peoria Public Schools. So this is a place where our students can come, they can catch up on their credits and they're not considered a dropout, they can still earn that high school diploma. These kids also to have the opportunity to take advantage of our CTE programs at Woodruff, so they're not only earning their high school diploma, but they're also have the opportunity to be exposed to careers and to get certifications and licensure. We also, when there is room available there, we do have young people, as I said, that make poor choices. Those kids may get caught up in the judiciary system, either at the little people level or the big people level, and we sometimes don't necessarily want them to go back into a huge high school where they may not be ready to cope with that many people. So they start off at Knoxville to be able to get acclimated before they transition back. And a lot of times, these kids don't want to transition back. They like the small classes. They like being able to go into that. Then we have Peoria High School. You heard a lot about that tonight. The way to get into Peoria High School, if you don't live in their region, is through the PSA and we're very excited about the opportunities that they're bringing back. We look forward to seeing that grow so that we can get more kids there for the PSA. As a- As a mother of a child, that if it wasn't for art, he probably would have been at an Knoxville Center because that's what kept him in school. And now he's a graphic designer. We know how important that is. So, we're excited about what they're doing there at Peoria High. But Peoria High does have students there that arts aren't their interest and their love. So, those students take the basic introductory class, classes that lead them to a lot of the licensing credential programs at Woodruff. They also have the business, as I said earlier. And this year, because for the last three years, we pulled our data. And the only kids that were going to Woodruff for the engineering program were Peoria High kids. So, in order to be respectful of finances, we are moving that program to Peoria High so that those kids, we can grow that program there with those students and provide them that opportunity. At Richwoods, the way to get into the Richwoods, if you don't live in that zone, is through the International Baccalaureate Program. We've had that presentation for several years now. This is a rigorous college course program. It starts in the ninth grade year is what is called pre-IB, where they take the AP classes. And then by their junior and senior year, they're actually taking college courses that earn them credits at the collegiate level. They also have the Health Oc pathway out at Richwoods. The kids start the program there. And just like Manual, they finish it at Woodruff if they are interested in the CNA and phlebotomy licensure. For next year, our students who are taking classes with Mr. Rhodes can also finish up with an MNet 150 and 151 class, which will lead to IT certification. And then redefining what Woodruff is. We are excited about all the programs that have been down there, but we wanted to make sure that we streamlined it so that we're, number one, using district finances. But number two, we've been bringing the community and ICC and to help us know what is it we can help grow our own here in Peoria. The transportation is provided to and from the students' home high school each day, back and forth. We have had some students tell their parents, well, I have to drive because they want their car. And then when the parents realize that, the parents realize that, no, they can get on a bus. So, that's exciting. Kids can go through cosmetology, barbering, and culinary arts. That's a two-year certification program and earn their license. So, not only do they have to sit for those hours, they have to do internship hours with that. But then they take a licensure exam. So, of course, our kids coming out from cosmetology and barbering have their license to move on and work in a shop. And our culinary kids, instead of being a waiter or waitress, they can also move up past the line chef. They could be a sous chef or a specialist in a bakery. Obviously, I'm not a cook, but that, I like to eat their food, but I don't do the cooking. We also have construction trades, auto body, and hair braiding. We are the only hair braiding certification program south of Chicago. So, we should be very, very proud of that. Our kids sit for that in our construction trades. That will be everyone who wants construction trades will go to Woodruff next year. Our kids walk out of there OSHA certified. And our students who are, there will be two different pathways next year. Are the one that we currently have with one and two. And then we're also going to be offering a work-based learning program through our construction trades where the kids will spend first semester visiting various, various sites through construction trades and then intern in the second semester. Our auto body kids, we just partnered up with a company called Gerber. They're located here in Peoria, but they're also known national, nationally. With these kids, these students, or if they sign on, Gerber will pay for them to continue school free of charge with them in their program. It's a six-month program after graduation. And then through them signing with that, they commit to work for Gerber for three years. So, they're getting a free education and they know for three years they're going to be employed. And our kids were very, very excited because they love this program. Early childhood, we have our kids in the educational pathway who are thinking about being teachers or future daycare operators. This program is at Manual and at Woodruff. So, kids who are interested in going into that or even counseling, social work, they can start this. And then we've partnered up with ICC to do some dual credit classes through the Early Childhood Program down at Woodruff. Our most exciting program, starting next year for me is, and this is where I think I'd want to go back, but I'm a germaphobe, so it probably wouldn't work, is through the health pathway, you can leave Woodruff in your senior year with a CNA license, which means instead of working at a fast food joint or somewhere like that, you can actually be in the hospital or daycare, working in a field that you love. We start our phlebotomy program at Woodruff. So, the kids, when they leave us, because of the age limit, they don't leave with the phlebotomy license. They do everything but the practical. Once they graduate and leave us and turn 18, they finish the practical at ICC. So, for some of them, that may be that summer. Others who wait until turn 18 in the summer, it'll be that fall. And then they walk out. I did not realize until I've been on these health, health little committee things in the community, how desperate we are for phlebotomists. There's not enough. They're begging people to be this. The next thing is our EMR and EMT. We are starting that licensure program next year. That is for our rising seniors. So, a student can, who's interested in this, can walk out with an EMR certification. And once they turn 18, they can sit for the EMT exam. Once again, as I told you, we don't focus on money, but sometimes money talks. A student walking out with that license can be hired in Peoria next year and start out at $50,000. That is an awesome thing for our young people. I was speaking to an avid class and one of the kids said, well, I want to be a doctor. And I said, then why wouldn't you sign up for this? Number one is dual credit courses. Number two, if you've ever looked at a medical application, it asks you how much interaction have you had with patients or in this field? To be able to put down that in high school, you got your CNA license or your EMR, EMT license, that is just one more plus in your hat trying to get into medical school. So, we encourage that. The other thing that we're desperate and in need of here in Peoria is firemen and people that work in the fire services. Unfortunately, we've not had a lot. So, they go and pull up in Chicago. But about two years of experience, they up and leave us to move back up to the great city, hoping to be on that TV show. It just doesn't work. And so, we want to grow our own so that people can stay right here in Peoria with us. So, we're starting to offer fire science next year for rising seniors. The reason we only start that at the senior level is you have to be 21 to be a fire person. So, if they start too early, the fire department told us they drop out. And that's where they've been losing people. So, we're hoping to start them in the senior year, keep them excited, and then they'll be ready to serve here, us here in Peoria in their senior year. Any questions? Don't you want to go back to school and be a student in 150? I know I do. Minus the other stuff, minus the other stuff.
You've got to take the good with the bad.
Yeah, you do. But I tell you, that drama would get old to me.
I'm sure that Patrick sitting back there is excited about the fire science, right, Patrick?
Then the police science will be next.
Yes.
Is there a need for that?
Definitely. A question. Couple of questions.
Okay.
In a lot of the, a lot of the programs, you had indicated that there will be certification at the end of the courses. I guess one of the things that we need to find out or need to know is for those certifications, for those licenses that they have, that the students have an opportunity to, to apply and take, what is there a cost to them?
That is something that we are working with the budget committee. In the past, there has not been. However, it's expensive for these programs. For instance, it's to be a cosmetologist, if you did it outside of Peoria Public Schools, is a $25,000 education. So, we are working currently with the Budget Planning Committee, the Finance Department to say, what if, if we are going to charge, what will that be? But we don't want to limit kids who financially can't afford it not to be able to take those. So, that's still in the works with the Budget Committee.
In the, in the trades, can you explain to me what OSHA certification is?
I will, I will do my best what I've learned. So, in order to, to be able to work and to be able to build and understand it, they have to sit for little certification tests. So, they might get CPR certified. They may know how to, if something happens, and I don't know this. It's safety, a lot of safety things. But then how to deal with measurements so that if you're putting something into a house, you know how to make sure the electricity is just right so that you don't, like me, I'd probably put in something that was too big and then my house would burn down. They learn all of these things so that that doesn't happen. So, there's various levels. Our kids will leave out with the OSHA 10-hour certification. So, that's what our kids will live in. And then the more you get up into the trades, it goes like to a 25-hour, a 70, it goes, continues to go up.
So, when they, when they finish, when they finish in this particular, in this program, then, you know, I know that there are companies out there that are, that are really looking for students that have some type of experience, some type of interest, meet the criteria. Is, is there like internships? Are we partnering? Are we partnering?
Yes. And we're doing that with the trade union. They actually, we are working with the trade union themselves. I'm working with a guy named Robert Swiegel. He's over the Construction Trades Union. And our kids honestly are going to get a bump above the other folks when it comes to getting into their trades because of going through this program. We're actually going to use their curriculum. He's giving, and so that's going to be a cost savings to the district. We'll get all of that curriculum for free. And it just, and then they open up their doors to allow us to go in for these job shadowings and opportunities. So, our kids, when it comes to going into those apprenticeships, that's what they call them at the trade union, our kids will get a bump up of somebody who's just coming out of, off the street saying, I want to apply for the apprenticeship. Because our kids go through this program, they'll be a step ahead of these kids, those folks that are coming off the street.
We have to work on that MOU also. Let's remind him of that.
Yes.
And you'll, you'll get a chance to learn more about that.
One, one more question, or shall I say comment? You had indicated working with Mr. Steve, Robert?
Swiegel.
Swiegel? Okay. I'm going to put this out there like this. There are certain, there are certain companies that we do business with that work with a lot of the construction that we do. What about reaching out to some of those companies and partnering with them?
That sounds great. We can do that. We can add them to our list.
Yeah, we, we work with Perfect, Chris, Perfect. And it's kind of like this consortium. So, we're actually working with them via Perfect. They're the ones that really do that coordination. So, we're, we're open to working with any, anyone who's willing to collaborate with us and...
And we have been lucky. We've had some folks, the city has found us projects. In fact, there are some park benches that our kids built somewhere. I got to find it downtown. Do you know which ones I'm talking about? The ones that were built with the old recycled signs? I'm not sure where it is, but they, the city donated all these recycled signs, like stop signs and street signs. They donated them to our kids and they made park benches out of them. I had to find out where they are. So, we are, and other folks have called and said, we heard about your kids. We want you to do this, or can you take this project on? So, we'll, we'll continue to reach out for those folks to give our kids that hands-on experience.
Yeah. And good question, actually, Ms. Kostic. One of the things, I spoke with the guy from Perfect. I said, you know, there's a lot of momentum around this, the pathways and career technical education, providing opportunities for kids, internships. And that takes a lot of time and effort. I mean, this is just a little piece of what Ms. Johnson has to do. And we were looking, revisiting the Perfect budget to see if we could put some money aside to get someone to assist in that outreach and also assisting in finding internships and apprenticeships and just kind of helping because it's, it's a lot of work. And there's a lot more to do. And there are a lot of other areas. So, that's, that's where we're leading. Yeah, so, very good question.
Did you know that?
No, but that's, that was something nice to hear.
I, I wanted to get, make sure that we were clear on what, someone asked the question about the cost of the cosmetology class. It's not the class that you're considering cost, it's the certification, right? The, when you sit for the, try, sit for the certification.
It's everything.
I know, we used to.
It's everything. I mean, if they go to cosmetology school, they would have to either take out a loan or pay for that instruction. And they're getting it, they're getting it free. So, it's, they're getting a good deal from us.
Well, yeah, most of our students are.
Yeah.
But I know that when we first initiated this, that actually wasn't, you know, considered. And then also with the braiding, I know several of us met with some senators to get that license, licensure for braiding, which we're really proud of that as well. But with the EMT or the EMT, all that, if they went to school, they'd have to pay for it. So, we have to keep in mind that if we, you know, I don't want it, I don't want it to be prohibited for students unless they can get a grant or a loan. But I don't think they can if they are under, under certain ages. You know what I'm saying? So...
Just, just a piggy, I want to make sure I understand. I know we're talking about how much the cost that the kids don't have to pay because they're getting it.
Right, exactly.
But how much is it? Who is paying the cost to take the certification test?
The district is, at this point, at this point.
So, so the kids?
At this point, there's no cost to any student for any of these programs.
Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted clarification. Anybody else have anything, want to ask or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Great job.
This is Ross. I, I wonder if I might jump in. I have an announcement about Parent University and I let it get by me on the agenda.
Okay, sure.
So, last Thursday night, Woodrow Wilson Primary School hosted an outstanding Parent University for our district. We had a phenomenal speaker, Christian Moore. They all got books. And he was the keynote speaker. His message focused on our event theme of resiliency. And every parent received a copy of the book. We had 107 parents sign in for Parent University. And parents had two sessions with great workshops to choose from. And the K4 students in attendance had fun at a children's carnival and everyone enjoyed a great spaghetti meal. So, kudos to Woodrow Wilson for bringing 41 of their own parents to the event. And we had great representation throughout the district. Our next Parent University is fast approaching and will be held on February 18th at Charter Oak Primary School. Special thanks to the Charter Oak staff and students for sharing information about their school on the boards here around the room. And our theme for next month's event is healthy relationships. So, we hope to see you at 5:30 PM on February the 18th at Charter Oak.
And those schools with zero parents would like to see those numbers increase significantly. Thank you, Mr. Adler.
Thank you. Did you have something? I thought you had to.
Ms. Kostic has something. Are we doing announcements or?
Yeah.
Are we doing announcements?
We all got one.
Okay. Well, we were under announcements there with the alignment. Okay, go ahead. You have an announcement too?
Math Counts. More than 107th and 8th grade mathletes from 10 schools competed in the Peoria Public Schools Math Counts Competition on Saturday morning, held at Lindberg Middle School. Students competed in a sprint round, a target round, and a team round. They also played mathletic games. The top four teams in the district were Callan Coolidge at fourth place, Mark Bills at third place, Rolling Acres in second place, and Lindberg in first place. Let's give a round of applause for our Math Counts. Thank you.
And I get to do act of kindness, which is what I really like to talk about. Von Steuben Middle School is participating in the Great Kindness Challenge this week. The Great Kindness Challenge, one week devoted to performing as many acts of kindness as possible in a national proactive and positive bullying preventative initiative. I can see better. The challenge kicked off this morning with an all-school assembly. Students were welcomed by district administration and the manure rams, basketball coaches and players, uh, with a checklist of 50 acts of kindness. Von Steuben students are using this week to, to practice empathy, tolerance, and compassion for each other, their families, and their neighbors. We encourage all District 150 staff, students, and families to join Von Steuben students in focusing on increasing act of kindness in our community. So we hope that everybody joined with Von Steuben, uh, Middle School to do that.
It was an amazing experience this morning.
Yeah.
Ms. Wolfman?
This is just a reminder for our parents that we are two weeks into the survey window for the Illinois Five Essentials Survey, which ends on March 11th. Parents along with staff and students in grades six through 12 have an opportunity to participate in the Illinois Five Essentials Survey. This survey was designed to generate a detailed picture of the inner workings of our schools. As a parent, this opportunity will allow you to share your thoughts on the important elements of school effectiveness in a survey about your child's school. And it's very important that we get input from our parents on this. The five indicators that affect school success are effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involved families, supportive environments, ambitious instruction. Research has shown that schools strong on these indicators, the five essentials, are 10 times more likely to improve student learning. School-level reports will be generated if at least 20% of parents respond to the survey and will be sent to schools and districts in May and be included in each school report card released each year by the ISBE. Please visit our district website for a link to the survey. The collective results of this survey will be one measurement tool for our strategic plan scorecard over the next five years.
Thank you. Other announcements? Okay. Approval of minutes from December 14th, 2015, and January 11th, 2016. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move approval and movement of the minutes of December 14th and January 11th.
Second?
Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Wolfman?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. Thank you. Uh, we are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria District 150 schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we are all, all have our First Amendment rights of free, free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session items. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We recognize that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will be collecting those comments after each board meeting and compiling and sharing with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has three minutes and no, no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Savino Sierra.
Savino Sierra, 1708 South Stanley, Peoria. What, uh, I was reading about your committee that you, um, selected to, um, find a superintendent to, uh, direct our, uh, our district here. And, uh, I see some of you people that you're preaching, uh, you want it with diversity, you know? Want to, everything with diversity. I see this, um, this committee that you got, there isn't a lot of diversity in there. You know, you don't, you don't have even one Hispanic in there. And, uh, uh, if you're gonna, uh, keep saying you want diversity and you don't, you don't, uh, practice it, you know, that's no good, you know? And, um, I'm more interested in, in, uh, people that I know are capable and are willing to take the job. And we got her sitting in this room tonight. And so I hope you people will, will take that in consideration and, uh, and support, uh, Dr. Karat for this position. And, uh, cause I want diversity too, but I'm telling you people that if you're gonna be preaching something, you better practice it, cause it don't look too good for whoever, uh, got this, uh, committee together. You know, uh, if you don't remember, Madam President, uh, we backed you up when people, you know, uh, didn't think you could handle it. And we backed you up all the day, all the time and all the way. And you're doing a pretty good job up there. So I'm telling you, what I feel personally and what a lot of people are saying. And I'm just giving you my opinion and I hope you people use your common sense and make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sierra. Uh, Ms. Sharon Cruz?
A teacher shortage has become a major problem in the public schools. I saw the teaching environment, especially due to discipline problems going downhill in the early 90s. By the time I retired in 2005, the problems had increased. Since 1994, two district teachers have been named Illinois Teacher of the Year. I have never understood why the reward for great teaching is to be taken out of the classroom. In fact, the only significant financial reward for any teacher is to leave the classroom to be an administrator or a counselor. Many new teachers start immediately to earn administrative certification. To me, that means that teachers know that financial security cannot be achieved by being a teacher, or worse yet, it may mean they don't want to be teachers. I believe teachers should be rewarded, rewarded financially for taking any liberal arts courses, not just graduate courses. The more a teacher knows, the more knowledge that can be imparted to students. When I was assigned to teach senior English, I realized that I was lacking the background in British history needed to relate the history behind the literature, just like the art. I spent many hours reading history books and developing the required historical term paper topics and opinions to help students organize their research. Jeff and Brett were my victims in that project. Uh, no administrator knew or cared how many hours I devoted to these and many other classroom projects. I want to challenge you to ask all teachers to keep records for one year. Of all the time they work before and after school, at home in the evening, on weekends, on days off, and in the summer, grading papers, planning lessons, researching, phoning parents, et cetera. You will be shocked. You will also find out which subject areas seem to demand the most work from teachers. Gathering this information should inspire you to find ways to reward teachers. Also for a year, I want to challenge you to ask teachers to keep records of all of their own money they spend on classroom needs. Again, you will be shocked. Teaching is a very personal and creative venture. Good teachers put their hearts and souls into their work. Each teacher has his or her own teaching style. Teachers want to teach, not to administer computer programs or read scripted lessons. Please find ways to attract teachers and then incentives and support to keep, keep good teachers in the classroom, but not merit pay to pit, to pit teachers against each other. We now have an environment friendly to teachers. Please build on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terry Nat?
As the Art Committee was presenting, I, I just wrote a few notes. And I put down the arts. Refreshing, awesome. I want to thank the committee, the administration, and the board for finally getting back to what the students want and students need. I think it's very important that you understand that our students want these things you talked about tonight. The strategic plan, and I applaud you on your strategic plan finally. I, I still don't know why we just didn't build on the one previous that Dr. Royster developed. Uh, and it's an ongoing tool that we simply, uh, update every year rather than make a new one. Every superintendent we get, we don't need a new one every time. We can build on the old one. But I, I looked at a couple of things and on this first page, I just want to read. It says, implement the new Illinois learning, learning standards, uh, in all content areas for the students. And then on the opening page, it basically says this again. I, I think that this is inappropriate. Uh, no child left behind was an idea of the federal government. I stood here 10 years before it completely collapsed and said it wouldn't work. Uh, it was simply there to label students and school districts as failures so charter schools, uh, could be, uh, made available. Uh, I, I think it's, it's still collapsed under its own weight. I think every time you watch the debates of the Democrats and Republicans, they talk about Common Core and they talk about the park testing. And I, I think equally in this country, or probably more lopsided against it, uh, the people are against these concepts. States are against these concepts. We didn't even go to these two meetings that they had on park and Common Core in Peoria and Washington. And, and you need to educate yourselves on these things. If you're not educated, these are, this is going to collapse also. I stand before you and I say within five years, this will have collapsed. So don't build your strategic plan on the learning standards without researching the certain, learning standards. I still say that Avonville Kingman, Valeska Hinton, the Charter High School, and the, the movement of the students to Lindbergh and Charter Oak needs to be researched and backed upon, backed up upon if they're not succeeding. I don't think they're succeeding. I've never thought they were succeeding, but you refuse to do the research. Please do the research and especially research Common Core and the park testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we here? Okay. Um, under information items, number one, I'm sorry. Oh, any response to the audience? Audience comments? Do you have any response now? Okay.
I can make, Ms. Cruz mentioned, um, Teacher of the Year. What we have, um, Ms. Kimberly Thomas, who is currently the teacher of, the Illinois Teacher of the Year from Peoria Public Schools, um, in addition to speaking engagements, um, which is kind of a requirement of the award, she, we, we also have her serving as, she's coaching teachers, um, you know, high priority schools. So we're using her, I think, in a, in a, in a way that she can mentor and, um, build teacher leaders and provide professional, um, development and support for other teachers. So I'm proud to report that to you.
Okay. Thank you. On the information items, number one is going to be postponed until a later date?
They needed more, more than five minutes. I told them five minutes, so we agreed.
Okay.
Uh, we had enough items on, on the agenda.
Right. Number two, uh, Dr. Karat will introduce, uh, the combined sewer overflow.
So, let's see, who's here? Scott? Thank you. Um, I've met with our friends from the city and, uh, Public Works about, uh, three times now. They met with Cabinet, they met with me early on in the summer. And, um, it's, it's a situation that we all, in, in the, in Peoria County, right? We all have to sort of wrestle with. And it has to do with, um, for us specifically additional cost regarding utility fees. So thank you. I thought, um, I wanted, Board, I wanted you to hear that presentation. Um, Cabinet kind of had a tough time with the information. So I said, okay, well, Board needs to hear that too. So thank you for being with us. And, um, Ms. City Manager, Yurik, we appreciate your attendance this evening.
Uh, good evening. My name is Scott Reese. I'm the city engineer for the city of Peoria. Uh, we handed out some packets to you guys. One is wet weather, uh, what wet weather is and, and our work we've been doing through a one-water committee. And, and then the second packet is a key user packet, which is, uh, curtailed specifically to District 150 and the properties you guys have i- inside the city. And we'd be happy to answer questions on that or follow up with any further information that you might need. Uh, what is here tonight to talk about is the wet weather issues facing the, the city of Peoria. And, uh, basically, the first slide is talking about what is wet weather? And, and wet weather is anything, it's not only rain incidents, it's also snow, melting of the snow, um, anything that precipitation with, within the city. And it's, and every part of the city suffers from wet weather problems. And we mapped where we get all of our calls throughout the city. And you can see there's problems in districts one, two, three, four, and five inside the city. Uh, primarily our stormwater issues are in districts four and five and partially three. And that's because further on, you'll get into our combined system, which is districts one and two, and just a little bit of three. So in our stormwater system itself, right now we have 84 projects that are on, uh, backlog in the high severity range for a need of about $6.6 million in infrastructure work. We are currently funding that at a level of $1.2 million a year, uh, which we continually to fall behind to be proactive. And what we're having to do is just, uh, address the life safety issues that we have, um, with our stormwater infrastructure and try to catch pipes before they collapse versus actually going out proactively doing it. Uh, we also have about 448 backlog of the medium to high priority projects that our maintenance crews would do, which basically just includes the flooding of the streets. So going out cleaning inlets so that streets don't flood. Uh, we had to close down University Street on this last major rain, um, first time that I can remember us doing that. And that had to do with debris clogging the pipe underneath the road. And, and we just don't have the current funding and our staff to do that. Uh, next issue with wet weather that is the big issue is the combined sewer overflow. Um, it's, uh, this next slide will show you if I can get you to play it. Cause this explains, Evansville has a combined sewer overflow issue also. And they did a good job of, of making a video that kind of explains what a combined sewer is.
About 100 years ago, Evansville built its sewer system to carry stormwater away from streets. Later, when indoor plumbing was installed, homes and businesses connected their sanitary sewer lines into these storm sewers, making them combine sewer systems that cure both sewage and stormwater runoff. And dry water, combined sewers carry sewage from homes and businesses to wastewater treatment plants. However, during heavy rain or snowmelt, these pipes aren't large enough to accommodate the combined sewage and stormwater flow. Once the pipes flow past a certain level, the surplus water and sewage in the combined sewer over tops a dome and there's a wheel. Then sewage flows into waterways, creating a combined sewer overflow, or CSO.
So this is an issue the city's been facing for quite a while. 1972, uh, they adopted the Clean Water Act. The United States government adopted the Clean Water Act, which basically said you can no longer release raw sewage out into the, uh, public waterways. Um, in nine, in the mid 80s, the city settled with Illinois Pollution Control Board for about $10 million to, um, reduce our combined sewer overflow incidents, basically from 840 million gallons a year down to 160 million gallons a year. Uh, in 2006, a permit came up and the US EPA said that they would not renew our permit under our current, um, rate, which was the 160 million gallons a year. And so we have to work through, uh, solving that issue. So what this shows right here is where the combined sewer area is in Peoria. And it's our oldest, most densely populated, um, original Peoria. It, it was basically anything that was developed before 1937, before we had the sanitary sewer treatment plant. And this was the area town where they just built- And this was the area town where they just built the pipes and released them out to the river. So why is it a problem now? As I stated, the Clean Water Act, 1972, and basically, without renewal of our permit, we are forced to solve this issue with the United States EPA. We're currently, it's an unfunded mandate. The Clean Water Act was not, did not come with any funding strings attached to it. It was basically that it's a local issue, and folks need to solve it themselves, is basically how it was looked upon. So if we bring the number, and what it says is we need to bring our number of CSO events down to as close to zero as possible. We don't have to get it all the way down to zero, but it's as much as financially feasible for the city of Peoria. And we, like I said, we've been negotiating this since 2006 with EPA. So we're almost 10 years into it, trying to see what is the most reasonable solution for folks in the city of Peoria. Where we have landed is, we're looking at 100% green infrastructure solution. And folks ask what green infrastructure is. It's rain gardens. You'll see a lot of rain gardens down in the Warehouse District, at Mayan University. It's bump outs, basically using up street space that would be paved before and opening it up so that water can infiltrate back into the ground, because it's why we, it's a wet weather problem. The pipes are big enough to handle the sewage itself. It's only when it rains that we have overflows occur. And then also, green alleys. Chicago has a strong green alley program. Chicago is actually one of the first CSO cities that settled. I think they settled for about $4.1 billion to do theirs, but the green alleys basically take alleys back to brick permeable pavement so that that groundwater doesn't run off of them, it actually infiltrates into the ground. So what we've been working with the One Water Committee, trying to figure out a way to fund this, which is why we're here tonight, because it's going to be a large cost. And the One Water Committee looked at a lot of examples, from property taxes to sales taxes, and basically where we landed was setting up a stormwater utility. A lot of cities, Bloomington Normal has a stormwater utility, Champaign-Urbana have one, a lot of the Kauer communities around Chicago have them. Morton has one in central Illinois here. And what this does is, it ties use of the stormwater system to your property. So, and it's basically setting up a utility company, just like Greater Peoria Sanitary District, just like Illinois American Water, any other utility, that's how we are going to, or look to pay for stormwater. So how it's calculated is, we've looked at basically, one impervious unit or one billing unit is 1,000 square foot of impervious area. Each house has, or each property has a certain amount of impervious area on it, which is basically anything that won't let rainwater penetrate through it. So your roof, any paved parking lots, anything that doesn't allow that water to infiltrate back into the ground. Right now, we're looking roughly at about $5 per impervious unit, with the average household in Peoria being about 2,600 square foot of impervious. So 2.6 billing units per house, which ends up being about a $13 a month bill. So how will, will the stormwater, will the stormwater utility fix or fund the CSO fix? And it's a yes and no answer. It will fund part of it. It's a huge cost. It's the total cost to fix the CSO with the 100% green, where we've landed is somewhere between 200 and 250 million, and that's in today's dollars. We're looking at at least a 15-year, if not longer, implementation period for that. So it's, you're looking at a $20 million a year capital investment, most likely. What we're looking to use a stormwater utility bill for is our operation maintenance cost, once it gets built out, because there is an operation and maintenance cost for this, for any type of fix we would have, we would have a fixed operations cost. And so this would be a dedicated funding stream that could only be used for that. It is a separate account that is set up to only deal with stormwater infrastructure, because it is basically a utility company. So this kind of shows what our needs, working through the One Water Committee. A stormwater program would be in the $8.2 million range a year. That was actually, the committee came back with a little over a $12 million a year range, but at staff level, we didn't think that we could do that with the CSO coming up. The CSO operation and maintenance cost, if we bring it back to today's dollars, is going to run us about $5 million a year. For a total stormwater utility, we generate about $13 million a year in revenue. How that affects District 150, right now, we're working through our impervious area, but basically, there's about, almost, there's 4,000, 4,930,000 impervious square feet that we can account to District 150 right now, and that equates to a monthly bill of around $25,000 for a yearly bill of around the $300,000 range for the stormwater system. What we're exploring, and what we've been talking to Dr. Karat about, is a way to reduce that through credits. It's something that a lot of cities have, and it's very important, because a big part of our settlement is going to be public outreach. And one way that we've seen great public, or basically by teaching kids, where we've seen great return on that investment, is recycling. Every year, we see our recycling increase, and we really feel that's by kids talking to their parents about it. So an education credit would be a big key to the stormwater utility. It could be such things as teaching 5th graders about stormwater needs, and us working through some sort of curriculum that can reduce or offset that bill. We're also looking at incentives. We're setting aside a certain amount of dollars each year for grants that would be available for capital projects. So if you're redoing a parking lot, a possible grant would be available to change that to impervious pavings versus regular paving, just to try to offset some of that initial capital cost. So this is all subject to council approval at some point in time. We're trying to get the word out right now, as best we can, and get feedback that we can try to really work through setting up this utility correctly. We do have a webpage that you can go to. I think it's in one of your packets that you have, and it's onewater.com, and it'll take you through what the One Water Committee did with all of our outreach and all the members on that. Or onewaterpeoria.com. So with that, I tried to make it as brief as I could for a rather complicated subject, but I offer answers, any questions or any feedback?
Any questions or comments from anyone? You have a question, Ms. Lee.
The credit you spoke of, what, how, what does that look like in getting credit back on some? I know a lot of it's pending what you're going to do, but...
Yeah, we haven't set it up yet, but, and that's what we're working with Dr. Karat's team on, on what would be, what's a reasonable credit, or what's feasible to do. Some cities that I know of offer up to a 50% credit with X amount of dollars associated per student that's trained. You know, and I, it kind of depends, we've seen them from $2 to $5 per 5th grade student that's trained, or something like that. So we're still trying to figure that out.
I was a little confused by the examples you gave to get credit, and how that would relate to the stormwater problem, and how it equates to that. And I'm a little confused with that, because if, you know, you gave an example of recycling. What exactly, give me an example of what kids would do that would alleviate this problem?
Yes, so, part of our permit that we're going to have from the United States EPA is going to be that we have to have an education credit. We already have part, a credit for stormwater or requirement in our stormwater permit to do education. So we go to the Clean Water Celebration each year. We do a couple events where we have a booth. And if we can get into the classrooms versus doing those, then we can take credit on our permit side also while helping you out to reduce your bill. And it would just be a curriculum change to basically, and I'm trying to think, Earth Science Class, or that type of thing, and showing how, or the benefits of infiltrating the groundwater in, or infiltrating water into the ground.
Okay. I know this is brought to the different neighborhood associations, and we had, we had presentation, and a lot of people got really upset about that, the concept of paying so much per household, but it's not clear, and I know you're still working on it, but as far as we're concerned, I'm still not clear how the credit would help you provide the funding you need to get this done, basically. So maybe I'll learn, maybe I'll get more...
Well, really, the credit is just to offset your cost.
Right.
What it helps us with is meet our permit requirement.
Oh, okay.
Because we will have a public education requirement of the permit that we're issued, and so it's an opportunity to partner and reduce your overall cost, but also helping us make that, versus us spending $150,000 on a marketing firm to get the word out on stormwater.
Okay.
It's a way to do it more grassroots.
And so if we were to do some of the projects, like the green projects in our facilities, that would also decrease that cost?
Correct.
Right.
Because anything that, and that's what we're looking at. Typically, you don't get 100% credit for like impervious pavement, but if you can reduce your overall impervious footprint.
So we had a lot of discussion on Friday around the credits and incentives, and you've seen that the monthly bill will be about 25 grand a month, and that's a lot of money. And we were sort of brainstorming and asking questions, and so far, we're thinking the credits will not generate that much money, but it's a start, and it's still at its embryonic stages. We could help them maybe be more creative and design, assistant design in whatever we could come up with. Right, team? Mike McKenzie, you were pretty vocal. Any feedback?
Now, my question also is, how does, what, how does the school district relate to the city? The city has a lot of buildings as well. So what, I mean, in relationship to what we might be...
We haven't pulled the city buildings off, but they are going to have to pay a stormwater utility also.
Yeah.
So it'll end up being an operationalized budget.
I've got a couple of...
And it's basically taking it from one, I mean, it'll go from general fund revenues and put them into the restricted stormwater utility fund. Just like we pay a sanitary district bill just for our buildings, just like we pay an Illinois American Water bill. I mean, it's really setting up a utility. And I, talking to credits, I could tell you, we've been working with Philadelphia a lot, because they're probably the next most green compared to our plan. And one thing they do is they have like public art competitions for rain barrels. And basically, they'll come up, work with their schools to come up with an art program to where you wrap like a vinyl screen around a rain barrel to give it a certain theme each year. But I mean, there's just, all kinds of ways to develop credits for this.
Yes, a couple of questions. Are there any inflows into the system from outside the boundaries of the city of Peoria?
Yes.
And how do you address that?
We are currently working through that right now for the combined system. Not necessarily for stormwater, but for the combined system itself, we're working through with the sanitary district on what would be a reasonable mechanism to charge those folks.
Is that a significant amount, or is it sort of de minimis?
It's still a work in progress.
So it's more than a trivial amount?
Yes.
So do you have the power to tax someone outside the city of Peoria?
That's a discussion we are currently having.
I would, I would really like to hear that discussion, because it is, it is a free rider problem here with others using the system. And I would think there'd be some issues, there's probably some court precedents on this. But I would certainly hope we wouldn't be subsidizing somebody that lives outside the city of Peoria, has a business or a school outside the city of Peoria, just as a matter of policy. Number two is, can TIF funds be used to cover any of the costs of operating or constructing any of these facilities, either by the city or by the school district?
TIF funds could be used, it is a mechanism for capital cost, wouldn't be a mechanism for operating costs, but for initial construction, that is a possibility.
Okay. And then finally, we have a number of properties that are actually leased from the Public Building Commission, and I believe the Public Building Commission is the owner and fee.
Right.
Who is...
We're dressed it on Friday.
Okay, well, tell me, who's responsible for the bill then? Us or the PBC?
Our understanding is the PBC, and I think in your packet, we pulled out their properties versus the ones that are under District 150.
I didn't have time to read it at the same time, so I'm sorry, but I...
Yeah, so it shows how much, and what I gave you included in the presentation?
There is something you gave us on Friday, so there...
Okay, we gave a revised one today. They kind of split out Peoria Building Commission, and so, or Public Building Commission, and so we, but the number I gave you in the presentation included that in there. I think that was about $100,000 a year that went to them, if I remember correctly.
It dropped it by about a third, but remember that until PBC maintains those leases, which is through 2027?
Long enough.
Some of them are different years.
That's a ways off.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and then, does the PBC have the ability to come back and bill us for that? Or do they have to take that responsibility themselves?
I haven't reviewed any of those.
I know, and this is a cold question here, but we need to find a way to fund this.
My answer to that is probably yes, somewhere.
Well, then, then we ought to be prepared to fight that.
You had a question, Rick, on Friday about a taxing body, taxing another taxing body?
Yeah.
Yes, that's really a philosophical question, and it is, all the properties are owned, all the district's properties are basically owned by the public. The parks are owned by the public. And what we're doing here is, is one taxing body gets to tax other taxing bodies, and I know you call them fees, but everybody in this town's going to call it a tax, one way or the other. But that is, I think, an interesting philosophical question, which I think, you know, the problem is that the school district's finances are, they're capped and captive. I mean, that there's, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have the ability to come up with creative new ways of funding stuff, the city does. But I just raise it as a question, you know, it's, it's not a new question, it's been around, you know, this is certainly not novel to this, to this idea, but when, when we're talking about, you know, budget cuts and laying off employees, it's, it's tough to think about having to pay another taxing body $300,000 a year.
But, understand, I mean, and like I said, it's, it really is not a tax, it's a utility set up, similar to Ameren or Illinois American Water or the Greater Peoria Sanitary District, and it is restricted funds that, that only allow it to be used for that utility's purpose. But that's why we really encourage, and we've been happy with the dialogue we've had so far, and want to continue it, to try to figure out those credits, to try to reduce that as much as possible by helping both parties.
I think that using the fee or the, I'll call it, I'll call it a fee, utility fee, when you're charging other, charging it to other public bodies, in some respects, it really masks the true cost of it to the entire community, because the residents who are footing the bill for all of it, one way or the other, won't see the entire bill, they'll only see part of it. And that doesn't mean I'm against it, I'm just saying this is a terrific problem.
Just a further question, Mr. Bush. Do we have the ability through any of our levies to do a pass-through of this cost? I know I'm catching you cold on this, but it's paid by the taxpayers, and I have, and I understand, and we've spoken to the city about this, and I understand the need for this, but the idea that we have to fund this amount of cost for this project when we are so desperate to find ways to do things, and the state of Illinois is continuing to pull the rug out from under school districts in this state, we need to find some way to do this that basically says, we can't afford to pay for this, and it's got to come out of TIF funds, credits, or a tax pass-through.
Exactly.
So that's my thought about it, and I hope you understand that we're willing to cooperate, and I'm sure the administration is too, but we just can't absorb cost increases like this. And it's got to come out of something. How many, how many teachers are we going to lay off? How many programs are we going to stop? How many other things we're going to stop doing because we have to do this? So, thank you.
I just have a question on the calculation on the impervious area. Is that, so obviously, that's a snapshot in time today. Are you going to recalculate that every year, or...
Typically, what we do is they fly the city every four years or so, and we do, redo our plan and metrics through our GIS system, which basically, all that information on impervious area is taken off those, are aerial photos. And basically, somebody sits down and draws outlines of every driveways and buildings. We are building a mechanism in if somebody contests it. If you think that there's a property that has less impervious area than what was picked up with that, a mechanism where you could come in and talk with us and show us a building plan, or sit down and point to the aerial photo and say that, that really is a grassy area, it's not a paved area, and there was a mistake in it, and that sort of thing, where it could then reduce. a mistake in it, and that sort of thing, where it could then reduce. But, uh, and that's probably every four years. Other than watching building permits, we're also trying to build a, a process into, as a building permit is pulled, um, to address.
I, I'm just curious if the, if the math works out, for instance, if we have a, a large amount of parking lots that's maybe underutilized at this point, and we decide we don't need all those extra spaces, we doze it and, you know, plant grass, um, does that carry through?
Um, it, yes. If, um, it picks up on the aerial photo, or if you were to come in with a, a certain parcel, uh, say you did it with, uh, Kingman, that parking lot, or any of those school, any school, and you came in with that specific school and that parcel ID, and said, "We eliminated all the parking lot for this," um, then it's easier for us to adjust the bill. At least, we know about it at that point in time.
My question is, um, did you include, you mentioned Kingman. Did you include schools that we don't own anymore?
Um, what we did is, we went through, so I mentioned our GIS system.
That's not up to date.
Okay. Um, and it, it basically takes the owner of record from the last taxes paid, or the, the last parcel, or the last taxing year, a- and that's how we pulled off all of them. And it, it's a somewhat of a cumbersome pro- um, process, and we're in the infancy stages of it, because, like, District 150 has, um, properties under a whole bunch of names in the system. They, they might be school-specific and then have District 150 at the e- end, or a, a number of different ways. I think you can see that in that, one of the tables in, in that packet. So, what we tried to do was try to run a query and grab anything that had District 150 in it for now, just to get started and grab the lion's share of them.
Okay. And, and, and how long have you known that we were going to be getting to this point? You, meaning the city of Peoria. I mean, how long have you?
Well, we started with the public input process about a year ago with the One Water Committee, and, and the representatives from throughout the city, from major corporations to, to citizens involved on this One Water Committee. And we really worked for, like, through what is the best way to pay for these issues that we're having.
Well, you know, you know, you understand that.
And we talked about property tax and everything. I would say we landed on a stormwater utility in October, in, in September of October of last year, um, that, that was going to be the committee's recommendation. And, and now, we're trying to work through getting public invol- or letting folks know. We've been meeting with neighborhood groups, basically, anybody that'll listen to us.
Hmm.
Does the public allow the comment on this, or not? I'm just asking, because I have a comment, but maybe.
No, no. No, not at this time. Okay, well, we're in the infancy stage of, of, of all this, I guess, hopefully, that we can work with. Mr. Bush, did you have something?
Scott, can you just clarify that something you and I talked about, uh, either Wednesday or Friday, that, uh, potentially, within the consent decree, there may be allocations for grants, uh, for those implementing capital improvements that would be green, thereby lowering their costs?
Yeah, what we're looking for is actually in the utility itself, in the city's utility. So, the, you, the city, um, the city's utility department would be the, the grantee of those grants versus the United States EPA. And so, of all the dollars we take in, we're setting aside a certain number for grants to, to fund capital projects.
So, if, if, uh, the district had a project that would be deemed, uh, sufficient to qualify for a credit or, um, decreasing the amount of pervious space within its boundary, that would be something we could potentially come to that mechanism to share in the cost of making that improvement?
Correct.
Thank you.
Could you explain the consent decree? Which, what, what, that's, uh?
Actually, I'll let our expert do that.
So, we're, and like I said, it's an unfunded mandate fro- from the US EPA, and what we've been under, um, since two thousand and six is what's called a tolling agreement, which is basically, we are agreeing to negotiate to a settlement on this combined sewer issue. And once we get to that agreement, uh, we enter into a consent decree, which is basically, um, City of Peoria and the United, and, uh, Greater Peoria Sanitary District settling with United States EPA. Um, and then that goes to a judge to certify as far as what we are doing, um, meets the intent, for lack of a-
Can, can I try to explain that, maybe?
Yeah.
It, it means that the, the EPA could sue the city of Peoria, but it's, it's refraining from doing so while discussions are going on. And then, once, once a solution is agreed upon by both parties, then, uh, rather than file a lawsuit and litigate it for years, they'll go to court and have the court bless, uh, the, the arrangement. Is that, is that well enough?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Mrs. Wolfman, just, Mrs. Wolfman.
Just, so I understand, the problem you've known about for a while, because I've heard the city council talking about this for quite some time and how they were going to fund it, but it's within the last year, then, that you started getting public input or, or started the committee to trying to decide how you're going to deal with it and where the funding's going to come from?
Yeah, because we didn't know what ex- we, we really got to handle this last year on what extent we would need.
Okay.
I, I mean, we've, we've been as high as five hundred and fifty million dollars for a solution, um, in our ten years of negotiation with the, the EPA. And so, it's really been within the last year where we've really narrowed down, um, what kind of funding stream we're going to be needing.
Yeah. And I was introduced to our costs on Thursday, and I invited them to cabinet on Friday and asked if they could present to us on Monday. So, I, I really thank you for being responsive and, and educating us and, and sharing the information with us. Um, the frustrating thing is, you know, the incentives and grants and potential grants that may be out there, they're not. So, I'm not really optimistic about that. I think the monthly bill will still be very high. Eric, we'll have to take a look at that list and make sure these buildings are, we're, you know, they're our buildings and look for discrepancies, but-
But, and the frustrating thing is for us, but also for the cities, once again, it's an unfunded mandate. So, I mean, we, we get that all the time.
How did it get to this point, though?
Huh?
I'm just wondering, how did it get to that point, though?
In the thirties, the way that it was built.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? No?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such requests.
Thank you, President Ross. So, the FOIA report has broken up into three categories under new request status. Since our last board meeting, uh, report on January eleventh, we have received four new, um, requests. And out of the, these four new requests, uh, three of them were filled. Category two, in terms of pending request status, there are no pending requests noted on the, um, January eleventh report. And then, um, category three, request summary, since January first, we have received four requests for this calendar year for a running total of about six thousand dollars.
Thank you. Proposed expenditures over twenty-five hundred dollars.
Hi. Thank you, President Ross. Uh, most of these reflect, uh, normal and customary spending on special education services and ongoing technology upgrades. Uh, I did want to draw your attention to, uh, the Manual High School Kitchen, uh, um, upgrade of about twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, this is to bring Manual up to speed with similar improvements that were made, uh, at Richwood and Peoria High School back in two thousand and thirteen. So, uh, all good expenditures.
Any questions on expenditures? Okay. And that's fine again.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Mr. Pauli?
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, Mr. Adler and I will be sharing this duty. He's going to take the second page.
A lot of consent.
Item number one, uh, the gifts to the school district this meeting, there are none. Year-to-date, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, nineteen cents. Item two, payment of bills. Item three, the Human Resources Report, the proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of employee. Item four, payment for travel. Item five, field trip approval, Manual Academy, Southern Illinois University. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Manual Academy RoboRams to attend the FTC Regional Qualifying Tournament per Board Policy six, colon, two forty. Students will travel to Southern Illinois University in Carbondale, Illinois on January twenty-nine, two thousand and sixteen, and return on January thirty to participate in the FTC Regional Qualifying Tournament event hosted by Southern Illinois University. This cost will be paid by the Caterpillar Budget, no cost to the students or the district. Item number six, field trip approval, Richwoods High School, Port Clinton, Ohio. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Richwoods High School JROTC to compete in the Air Rifle Service Championship Match per Board Policy six, colon, two forty. Students will travel to Port Clinton, Ohio on February seventeen, two thousand and sixteen, and return on February twenty-one. This year is expected that two athletes qualifying for the Service Championship Match, MCJORTC Headquarters, is funding lodging and transportation. No cadets will be denied due to inability to pay. Item number seven, field trip approval, Richwoods High School, Anniston, Alabama. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Richwoods High School JRO, JROTC to compete in the Air Rifle National Championship Match per Board Policy six, colon, two forty. Students will travel to Anniston, Alabama on March sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and return on March twenty. This year is expected that two athletes will qualify for the National Championship Match. MCJORTC Headquarters is funding lodging and transportation. No cadets will be denied due to inability to pay. Item number eight, memorandum of understanding, Local Number Seven Eighty, Fiscal Year Fifteen, Joint RIF Committee. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education, Peoria Public Schools District Number One Fifty, and the Peoria Federation of Teachers, IFT, AFT, F of L CIO, Local Number Seven Eighty, as required by Senate Bill Seven, Public Act ninety-seven dash zero 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 eight, one oh five, ILCS five slash twenty-four dash twelve, establishing criteria for the honorable dismissal groupings for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year. This memorandum of understanding was prepared by the Joint Senate Bill Seven Committee. This year, the committee was composed of Lana Myers, Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, and Tanya Strong on behalf of Local Seven Eighty, and Rick Redberg, Ravanda Johnson, and Jerry Hammer on behalf of District One Fifty. Item number nine, resolution concerning district participation in U.S. Department of Education Urban Center Grant with Illinois State University. Proposed action is that the Board of Education of the City of Peoria School District One Fifty adopt the attached resolution confirming the district's desire to participate in the U.S. Department of Education Urban Center Grant through and in collaboration with Illinois State University. Item number ten, textbook adoption. Proposed action is that the Board of Education is asked to approve the purchase of Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two textbooks at a total cost of hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-eight cents to be paid out of Title One Flexibility Provision. In total, seven hundred and fifty Algebra One, eight hundred and eighty-two Geometry, and six hundred and twelve Algebra Two books will be purchased.
Item number eleven, Family Core Contract Approval Counseling Services. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the attached contract with Family Core to provide a full-time family school liaison for the school-based attendance intervention and suspension expulsion prevention services to at-risk students attending Valeska Hinton, uh, equivalent point six seven full-time. Total cost of this one-year contract is eleven thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-two, eleven thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-two dollars, which includes services in a case management format in order to address the needs of at-risk students that are exhibiting social, emotional, and/or behavioral problems negatively impacting school performance. Funding for Family Core will be through Title One. Item twelve, clerical update to Policy Two, colon, two sixty Uniform Grievance Procedure. Proposed action, that the Board of Education of City of Peoria District One Fifty agree to change the complaint managers from William Salzman and Maureen Langhoff to Rick Redberg and Jerelyn Hammer for Policy Two, colon, two sixty Uniform Grievance Procedure. Item thirteen, clerical update to Policy Five, colon, ten Equal Employment Opportunity and Minority Recruitment. Proposed action, that the Board of Education of City of Peoria District One Fifty agree to approve the change to nondiscrimination coordinator and complaint manager names from Terry Dunn and Maureen Langhoff to Rick Redberg and Jerelyn Hammer for Policy Five, colon, ten Equal Opportunity Employment and Minority Recruitment. Item fourteen, clerical revisions to Policy Seven, colon, one hundred Health Eye and Dental Examinations, Immunizations, and Exclusion of Students. Proposed action, that the Board of Education agree to change the policy on health documentation compliance to the first day of school instead of the current date of October fifteenth. Changing this date will be in conjunction with earlier registration days. These modifications are expected to get more students in school sooner and have fewer students miss school during later parts of the school year. Item fifteen, meeting dates for the Board of Education FY sixteen, seventeen. Proposed action, that the Board of Education hold its regular meetings during the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school year on the second and fourth Monday of each month with the following exceptions: Friday, July first, two thousand and sixteen, Monday, July eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen, Tuesday, October eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, Tuesday, February twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, Monday, March twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, and June twelfth, two thousand and seventeen. That concludes the consent agenda, President Ross.
Thank you. Are there any items any board member would like pull for, um, separate vote on the consent agenda? If not, could I have a motion in a second?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
So, um, discussion?
Just for item ten, the textbooks, um, obviously, a large amount of money gap that was identified, and appreciate staff's, uh, noting of the, are these textbooks intended to be used yet this year?
Next year.
Next year? Preparation for next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Susan Gulbain is here, and, uh, she's done a really nice job providing the rationale. Um, when was the, when was the last time books were adopted? Was that two thousand and four?
Yes.
Yeah. So, they're pretty old.
Yes.
Old, old, old. They're not aligned to Common Core. I'm sorry, Terry.
Anything else? Any other discussion, Mr. Pauli?
Not a question, but a clarification just on, uh, items number twelve and thirteen. That's, there's no substantive change to the policy. It just requires us to insert the names and contact information for two people, and those two titles are now being inserted as, as a result of changing responsibilities. The, the policies themselves are unchanged. And, uh, in number fourteen, it's changed basically of the date, and nothing else changes in that.
Okay. Other comments? Could you please call the roll? Mrs. Wolfman?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Pauli?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Okay. On the deliberation agenda, number sixteen, strategic plan approval for two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and two, twenty twenty.
Thank you, President Ross. Um, board, you have in front of you a thirty-page document that is the result of, uh, a year of work by this board, by our district staff, by the community, and many of the individuals who've provided feedback and suggestions for improvement. The document outlines our path to two thousand and twenty, which includes five pillars of support in our quest to move from good to great. What I'm most proud of is the collaboration that took place to develop this plan. As a board, you began holding four forums last January and February. You spent time reviewing the outcomes of those meetings and prioritizing the information that was received. In September, our district universal leadership team and our district leadership team and staff began developing a plan. On November fourth, we released the first pillar and made it available on our website. Throughout that month, we added the first draft of all pillars, and I began meeting with any and all community groups that I could get, that I could, I could to get feedback. Also, late last year, I first presented my plan publicly for Pillar Two, to add an Office of Social Emotional Support to our district. My team and I have provided updates as often as possible to you during the plan's development, with much work behind the scenes to develop measurements, a score, a scorecard, and a map, map out, and to map out a plan of attack to accomplish our goals over the next five years. I want to specifically thank the team from CSI, Center for School Improvement, who has been a tremendous report resource for us during the development of this plan. Sandy, Susan Klesak, Sandy Wilson, and actually, also, Roxanne Filson are such amazing partners, and they work with our team very, very closely. Because you sat through the entire evening with us, I would actually appreciate if you would make a few brief remarks regarding your experience. regarding your experience working on this plan with us, please. I really appreciated working with both of you, both Sandy, you too, and Susan. Quickly, what are some of the things? Yeah, absolutely. Yes. So, they're friends from...
Well, it's been an honor to work with such an amazing team. We met with Dr. Karat on day six of her appointment as interim superintendent, and she shared with us this document right here, this one-page document, which I feel like we should shellac this. This was the beginning of what you now, that beautiful, bold document that you hold in your hand. We worked with the team every two weeks. They came together to work on the plan, brought new input, new conversation. Every time, they came in ready to work, enthused. Every week, it was more bold, more creative as they worked together to create this plan. Sandy?
I'm right next to her. It's been a, it's been a labor of love, quite honestly. And I think if you could see behind the scenes of the many voices that were included, I think that's the most impressive. As an outsider coming to work with your district for the first time that I've had the opportunity, the continual feedback that has been gathered to constantly blend us. And it is, it was a living document. It was ever-changing, sometimes several times a week. But that was because of all the feedback. So, I think that, at least from an outsider looking at this, I would be very rest assured that there were many voices that came together from the community as well as your wonderful staff here that we've had the opportunity to get to know quite well through this process. So, we're excited about being a part of the process, and we're looking forward to help continue to see this come alive. Thank you for the opportunity.
Very much so.
And we were sharing with our boss today, who has worked statewide about what's been happening and how exciting. And she's been, she's been in on some of the meetings, and she said today she finished our meeting and said, "I think I'd like to move to Peoria because so many exciting things are happening there."
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for your assistance. I think it's worth noting, all of this work was done in-house and with volunteer partners. What some districts easily do is they bring in a consultant and spend about $80,000, $200,000 to get this work done. And we did it in-house at no cost at all to our taxpayers. So, we're very, very proud of that. Along with the plan, as you heard, there is a scorecard, which is very important to us, which will measure, with measures to gauge progress over time from 2015 to 2020. And you have the plan in front of, the strategic plan in front of you. There are five pillars, and I won't spend too much time, much time going over those. But the strategic plan is our roadmap, roadmap of planned actions to take our district from its current position to a new desired position. We have a clearly defined purpose and vision, which is to inspire, to graduate, to educate all of our young people to be contributing members of society and to go into college or find a decent job, a great job with benefits. So, that's, that's the ultimate purpose and vision. We have our goals listed on our scorecard. We know where we are relative to those goals, and we have the plan to get us there. So, we're proposing in the plan alternative ways to reduce suspensions, expulsions, alternative ways to avoid promotion of students who cannot read at grade level. We're addressing parental involvement. We're addressing improving the budget. We're addressing the hiring of the best and brightest teachers. So, our plan is, it's unique, and it's customized for our district. If you look at the scorecard, it's really actually, I think, amazing. I'm really proud of it. It's very, very different from, you know, the traditional boring plans that you see around. We did not pay a consultant to create it for us. It was actually built by the entire community, and I say we've had unprecedented collaboration. The strategic plan's scorecard, I would say, is comprehensive and bold as well. We're holding, the unique thing is, Mr. Nappi's always on me, and we're communicating, but Mr. Nappi will be happy to know, we're holding everyone to highest standards, not only internally, but externally. And I think everyone is familiar with the five pillars. But my team and I will be happy to answer any questions, any questions from the board at this time. But in closing, we will be looking for and sharing, we're looking for growth, and we're looking to share the growth with you. But I would like to ask the team to stand, because as Sandy said, it has been a labor of love, and we've actually, we've done it together, and everyone has contributed. So, Mr. Se, Mr. Copeland, Carla, Maureen, Revonda Johnson, Angie Stockman, Dr. Bell, Susan, Ms. Goldbind. Everyone, can you please stand? Mike McKenzie? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, board, we are asking you to approve the district strategic plan for the years 2015 through 2020 as presented.
Mrs. Ross? I have a motion in a second.
Just like to make a comment on this as well.
Okay.
Just a comment.
Is there, was there a motion made?
No.
Oh, not yet. Okay.
So moved.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, as we reflect back on the process that this took, as we stated, it started over a year ago. And since he is present, I would also like to recognize Mr. John Bateman, who was on the board at the time. And Mr. Bateman and I, through Mrs. Wolfmeyer, were designated to work and start that committee and to roll things out for the community with Chris Copeland, and again, fantastically, the work that was done with Mr. John Day. So, again, looking back on all of that and seeing where we are today, just wanted to make those acknowledgements as well.
Thank you. Great job, Ms. Butler, and Mr. Bateman, and Ms. Wolfmeyer.
Other questions, suggestions?
Not, not a question, but a comment. First of all, I think this is very well done. And strategy is not set in stone. It's crafted, and it evolves as the circumstances and the outcomes change. And so, I would encourage the board to think about this as a living document that needs to be updated as the circumstances and the situations change. That doesn't mean you change your goals, but it does mean that you may have to change your tactics and your strategy. So, I certainly support it. I think it was the culmination of many people's efforts and input. Many of us were involved in all of those discussions and heard all that commentary, and many people spent a good amount of time on this in the community, thinking about it, and providing very sincere and direct input. And I appreciate that as well. So, thank you for your work, and Dr. Karat for your leadership in bringing this thing to a conclusion. So, well done.
I didn't do much. I just took your notes and did what you asked me to do.
Well, let's not say that.
Well, you know, that's probably not true. Every public meeting I've been in and in presence, she's had copies of this, passing it out to people, saying, "What are your suggestions?" And so, that's how we got a lot of suggestions. So, I know that, what I want to recognize is the staff that stood up and worked, still doing their regular jobs while they were working and doing this as well. So, you might consider her somewhat of a slave driver. It may not be a good word, but...
I'm my mother's child. That's what I called her.
But anyway, this has been moved to second. Can I have a call roll, please? Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Other deliberation items, expulsions.
Number 17, expulsions. The proposed action, that's expulsions listed on the report dated January 25, 2016, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Number 18, expulsions with the expulsion to be held in abeyance. The proposed action, that expulsion with the expulsion held in abeyance be listed on the report dated January 25, 2016, as amended.
Second.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic? Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Number 19, revocation of expulsion held in abeyance. The proposed action, that the revocation of expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report January 25, 2016, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic? Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Number 20, revocation of board probation. Proposed action, that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated January 25, 2016, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic? Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you. Presentations and suggestions by board members? No presentations or suggestions? The topic that we were talking about earlier, and I know that Dr. Karat asked Mr. Bush about verifying those properties. Is it possible to have the, have addresses to each one of those, those PIN numbers? Because there's 67 properties there, and...
Yeah, what I, what I'll need to do is go into the county's database and pull up each PIN number specifically. And typically, there's an, there's an address associated with each PIN.
Yes.
It's parcel identification number.